And you're on.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the City Council Work Session. Today is Monday, March 11, 2024. It's approximately 1:00 PM. I'm Mayor Enriquez. I'd like to start with a moment of silence for our military and for our police and fire, and also want to extend our condolences to the mayor of the Village of Hatch, who passed away, Jim, also known as Slim Whitlock. So we could also remember him in our moment of silence. Thank you. You want to please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start first with the jobs of the week. Sarah Rainey.
Good afternoon. Thank you. All right. My name is Sarah Rainey. I'm from the Workforce Connections Office for the Southwest Region here in Las Cruces and then all across the whole Southwest, seven counties. For our jobs of the week for Las Cruces, we have a service attendant for the city of Las Cruces. It's 15:57 an hour. That posting closes on the 18th. We also have a traffic signal technician. The position pays $21.95 an hour, and it is a continuous posting. For White Sands Missile Range, we have a QC Safety Specialist, one. That one starts at $25 an hour and is open until filled. For La Fiesta Bakery, we have a donut fryer. They, the position didn't have a pay, so that one's depending on experience. That posting closes on the 21st as well. For Sherwin-Williams, they have a customer service specialist, starting at $15 an hour. And then for Monsieur Valley Hospice, we have a cook and part-time weekend position open. And then we wanted to remind you all of our events that we have coming up. We do need expertise to come and help us out at the Mock It Till You Rocket. That's where the high schoolers get to learn how to interview. They get to test their skills out and have actual interviews with employers. Some employers are hiring, some of them are not, but they still get that good one-on-one practice, and they get the feedback on how to do a proper interview for their jobs. We also, of course, do our monthly job readiness at the Community of Hope. This month, it's on the 13th. So that is just for that, in that community. And then we have upcoming, we have the Las Cruces Spring Career Fair. That'll be on March 27 at the Convention Center from 2:00 to 5:30. We will have veteran priority as well from what one, the first hour is veteran priority. So only veterans can come in. They can come in to meet the employers first, and then after that, it's open to the public. Anybody looking for a job or just a change. So, and then to introduce you, to introduce him, I have Jason Bernal here to speak on the Hiring Heroes.
Hello, council members. My name is Jason Bernal. I am the local veteran employment representative for Workforce Connections. We will be placing a Hiring Heroes event, which is a veteran-specific job fair. It will take place on April 1 at the American Legion Post 10. Times are going to be from 10 o'clock to 2 o'clock. And what we're hoping to do is provide jobs to, job-seeking veterans for law enforcement, health services, emergency services, as well as federal contracting. There will be some other supportive services there for the veterans to use if they so choose, and they can reach me either at my office, their workforce connection, or we also have a flyer with an email that they can register on there directly. If anybody is interested in a flyer, I will be holding them, and we'll pass them out after the meeting.
Thank you for having us. Does anybody have any questions? All right. Thank you all. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Next is Pets of the Week with Amy DeFelix.
Hello, everyone. I'm Amy DeFelix with the Animal Services Center of the Monsieur Valley. We'll go ahead and get this up, and we'll start presenting the pets of the week. We start off with our cat of the week. This week, his name is Tommy. His number is 73009. And he says, "I'm a handsome and friendly boy that was picked up as a stray with my brother. My brother has since found his forever home, so it's my turn now. I'm ready to turn my life from being a street cat into being a spoiled indoor-only house cat, loving my forever family as much as I can." And then we also have our dog of the week. Her name is Frosty. Her number is 64146. And she says, "I'm a fun-loving and energetic girl, looking for an active and loving family. I'm still pretty young, so I have energy that I like to burn off by playing with toys and going out for walks. At the end of the day, I'd love to wind down with some pets and cuddles from a loving family. I hope it can be yours." And then we have one adoption event this Saturday, March 16th, not the 11th. That's today. We'll be there from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and we will be at Oregon Mountain Organics. So that address is 1300 El Paso Road, in case you need it. We'll have adoptable dogs there, ready to go home, ready to meet you, and ready for you guys to fall in love. And then we have our links. We have our main website, ascmv.org. Of course, our social media is, we're on Facebook, Instagram, TikTok, and then we also have YouTube and Spotify and Apple Podcasts, where our podcast gets uploaded monthly. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Amy. Next on the agenda, 3.1, the Fifth Semiannual Police Audit Report presented by the OIR Group.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, councilors. I'm Viola Padilla, City Auditor, and today we have the OIR Group with us to present the Fifth Semiannual Police Audit Report to Council. So I'd like to introduce our presenters today, Ms. Teresa McGula and Mr. Stephen Connolly.
Thank you, Viola, and good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm Steve Connolly, and this is my colleague Teresa. As Viola just said, we are back here for the fifth time to present to Council our semiannual report on the Las Cruces Police Department, and we certainly look forward to discussing that with you. As you know, we are coming from Southern California, which is our base of operations, but we certainly do keep track of the news in Las Cruces, especially as it relates to the Police Department. And we wanted to begin today by formally expressing our condolences to the Las Cruces community and the department in particular about the loss of Officer Jonah Hernandez. That was deeply saddening news for us, and we are extremely mindful of the sacrifice that Officer Hernandez made and the dangers that go along with law enforcement on a daily basis. Part of our job as oversight professionals is to kind of be a step removed and to occasionally be critical of law enforcement and to have some suggestions and ideas about doing things differently or better. And there's certainly some of that in the report today, and we will be talking about that. But we wanted to emphasize that we always do our work since we first started doing this several years ago. We do our work from a position of respect for the work that law enforcement does and a recognition of the dangers of the job. And our hope is always that there is something constructive and collaborative about our recommendations. And as we say in the report, we're very appreciative of the relationship that we have developed with the Police Department. They are extremely cooperative with us and responsive to our questions and concerns and receptive to our ideas. That doesn't mean they always agree with them, to be sure, but they always hear us out, and we feel like the dialogue is a very positive thing. So, thank you. Just a little bit of background. I know we have some new faces on the dais this afternoon, since the last time that we were here. We have been working in the field of oversight of law enforcement for more than 20 years now. That's pretty much our full-time practice area, and we work with a number of different jurisdictions, providing a range of independent police services. Our arrangement in Las Cruces is that we are kind of plugged into the completed investigations across certain categories of allegations of officer misconduct, and Teresa will get into some of the specifics of that. But again, this is our fifth semiannual report. We have a presentation for you regarding an overview of some of our findings from this particular six-month stretch, and then, as always, we'd be very happy to entertain any questions that you folks might have. So, thank you. Teresa?
All right. So, as Steve mentioned, we are here for the fifth time. Every time that we present to you, we are looking at a span of about six months' worth of cases that we've evaluated. In this particular period, we're looking at June 1 to December 31 of 2023. So it is the cases that were investigated, closed, and reviewed by our group in that timeframe. As always, our objective is to determine if those investigations were complete, objective, and thorough. So those are the basis for our analysis and our reviews. And we also take a look at whether the actions from the department side were appropriate and fair based on the evidence that was provided in that investigation. And then, of course, we always have some demographics to provide for your review and evaluation. In this particular timeframe, we had two types of investigations that we review, and those are the kinds that we review in every period. One of those are the, one category is the internal investigations. So these are cases that were initiated by the department, typically by department leadership. A supervisor recognized an issue, sometimes lieutenants and above. Sometimes it's at the sergeant level that realized that an issue occurred, and it should be a formal investigation. In this period, we saw seven of those cases. One of those was a critical incident, which means an incident that involved the use of deadly force. It was an officer-involved shooting that occurred here in your city in 2020. And you might be asking yourselves, why are we now looking at it in March of 2024? We'll get into some of the details of that later in our presentation, but suffice to say for now that these typically take a protracted timeline. It is a lengthy amount of time, given the amount of investigation and different levels of review that have to occur. And so this came to us in that period last year. Others involved the use of physical force that the department itself, in reviewing the incident, found may have warranted additional review. We saw one vehicle pursuit, and we also saw a variety of procedural issues, like report writing was not done in a timely way. There were several that were related to the department's code of conduct, and the code of conduct is a kind of umbrella for a whole host of different kinds of potential misconduct. It ranges from things like discourtesy, use of profanity, all the way to miss, perhaps, truthfulness, failing to adhere to an administrative investigation's requirements around confidentiality and so on. So it's a whole host of things that are covered in that particular general order called the code of conduct. The second kind of complaint investigation that we review are these external investigations. External investigations are those cases that are brought to the Police Department by someone who had an encounter with a Las Cruces Police Department employee and was dissatisfied for one reason or another. They bring those complaints through the formal citizen complaint process. We had 12 of those cases. And as you can imagine, the most frequent type of allegation in these are, again, those code of conduct. So, "An officer was discourteous to me. I perceived that the officer didn't take my report seriously and didn't complete it in a timely way." In this period, we also saw about four cases related to the improper release of information or department information used for personal use. And of course, this is something that is of concern and was of concern to the department. These cases involved individuals who were employees of the Police Department, who used their own status as a peace officer to gain access to information that otherwise would not have been available to a member of the public. The department really quickly put in some safeguards around sharing information and access to information, which we felt was very appropriate. And so we will look forward to not seeing these types of allegations in the future, given the new guardrails that are up with respect to how to access systems and having to have a specific case number to access information and so on. And in this period, we also saw two uses of force that the complainants deemed were excessive, in their opinion. I will take this time to remind you all that unless it is a critical incident, like an officer-involved shooting, or a complaint by a member of the public that involves a use of force, we will not be typically looking at uses of force across the board. So these are only the uses of force that are brought to us through the types of cases that are within our scope of work. Back to you.
No, there's one more for you.
Oh, one more for me. We like to keep everyone guessing. Who's gonna... In this period, we saw a total of 98 allegations. And if you've been tracking how many allegations have been framed, because I know this is of paramount importance to all of you, the number in this period has shot up dramatically. Steve will talk a little bit about why that is. But in short, you should know that of those 98 allegations, 44 of them were sustained, which means that the department determined that misconduct did occur and provided the appropriate disciplinary action as a result of that misconduct having occurred. 37 of them were exonerated, and 10 were unfounded. Both of those categories indicate that the investigation showed that the misconduct, as alleged, did not in fact occur or did not occur in the manner in which the complainant articulated that it occurred. And seven fall into this "not sustained" category. That means that the investigation could not determine sufficient, with sufficient evidence, whether something happened or did not happen. And so that falls into this bucket called "not sustained." In almost all of the cases, we agreed and aligned with the disciplinary, excuse me, with the finding. In some, we had some disagreement around that, and we raised that, of course, to the chief and to the department. And so some of those will be, those particular cases are closed, and there is no further action on them. But looking forward, we can certainly look forward to having more appropriate findings that are based on the evidence.
So as Teresa said, statistically speaking, there is a definite increase in the number of cases that we looked at during this period and the total number of allegations, and obviously 98 in 19 total cases. So we had, most of the cases that we looked at involved multiple allegations, multiple policy sections that were being scrutinized for potential violations. When you see an increase in a category like misconduct investigations, there's obviously an initial impulse to think this is concerning, and it's been our experience that that isn't necessarily true. Do we track the complaints year over year and period by period? Absolutely. And if there's a noteworthy shift in that or spike in that, then we're obviously interested in what might be accounting for it. But oftentimes, there are explanations that are a little more nuanced than the simple idea that, wow, officers must really be acting out in more problematic ways, and that's generating more of these complaints. Some of it, in this case, turns out to be a timing issue. When are the cases getting completed? So it's not as if all the complaints were clustered together in one period of time, although that does happen. And the chief was just telling us, you know, towards the end of the year last year, they experienced a big rise in complaints, you know, relatively low-level misconduct, but a cluster that didn't necessarily seem to be connected to any particular basis. And it's just statistically just something that happens once in a while. But I think part of the reason why we had more completed cases is that the department has prioritized a more timely completion of these investigations when they're open. This is something that we have talked about repeatedly and emphasized, and we really see it as a hallmark of an effective discipline process, that the cases are addressed and completed in a timely fashion, and I know that that is a priority of chief's stories as well. So there was a backlog of cases that was responsible for some of that number. Secondly, with regard to the number of allegations, the department seems to be taking a more detailed, nuanced approach to breaking out individual policy, potential policy violations as they arise in a given case, rather than just using a blanket charge, for example, that kind of covers some of the different aspects of something that a resident was complaining about. The department will break out a specific policy section when it has one and apply an analysis to that in particular. So it's not at all unusual for a case to have six or seven different allegations based on one complaint. And another factor on this, you can see the term that the department uses is ancillary issues. And again, we see this as a positive sign in terms of the effectiveness of the internal review process. When a resident makes a complaint and it gets investigated by the department, they're going to address everything that's been brought up by the member of the public, which of course is very appropriate, and it's something that we have really emphasized in our earlier reports. But if they identify something else in the course of doing the investigation, they looked at this case and they figure out that the officer's report was not as effective as it should have been, for example, or there was a body-worn camera issue that the complainant may have had no idea existed, but the department's like, as we're reviewing this, what's, why did this happen? What's going on here? And they will add that as an additional focal point and address the behavior as part of that investigation. And again, we see that inclusive approach to be a positive thing and a good way of using the process to really help to improve officer performance. In terms of the demographics, there were 27 different employees named in these cases. And we break down the ranks a little bit. There are actually a couple, Teresa and I were talking about this this morning as we were going over the presentation. In one of the cases, and it was actually the officer-involved shooting case that Teresa talked about, there were three sergeants and a lieutenant involved in that incident in the department's response. So we keep track of the rank levels of the people that are involved. We're always interested in when supervisors are the subject of allegations, because that can be a weak point in department investigations, not in Las Cruces specifically, but just kind of generally in law enforcement. There's this concern that once people reach the management level, their behavior doesn't get scrutinized as rigorously as the rank-and-file officers, and that can be a source of, you know, it can be undermining to confidence, you know, for the officers within the agency. But also, obviously, it goes against the purpose of the whole exercise. So we do keep track of when there are supervisors involved and make sure those cases get special attention and that the officer, the subjects of those cases are being investigated appropriately and thoroughly and that decisions are supportable. So those are basically the numbers. And again, three non-sworn employees included in this grouping of cases. We've actually had several more in other instances, and so that's a trend that seems to be reduced in the more recent reporting that we've done. And then in terms of the outcomes, as Teresa said, there were sustained allegations in a number of the cases that we looked at, which is a sign of, again, a lot of times when it's an internally-generated investigation in particular, the department already has concerns about the conduct, and that's what's brought it onto the radar screen in the first place. So it's not unusual for those to have a higher percentage of being sustained. But there were a number of sustained allegations in the resident complaint cases as well. The discipline process ranged all the way from a verbal reprimand, which is kind of the lowest level of intervention, all the way up to termination for officers in some, a couple of the cases that we looked at. And this next bullet point is one I really do want to emphasize. It's one thing to say, hey, you violated policy, and here's a verbal reprimand, or it was a low-level issue, and here's a written reprimand, but not, it didn't rise to the level of a suspension, and it was not a hugely significant issue. One of the things that we've really worked with the department on is the whole idea that the discipline process, unless you're separating the employee from the agency altogether, it really should be about changing behavior, correcting behavior. it really should be about changing behavior, correcting behavior. And one way to accomplish that, besides the consequences, to make sure that people are getting the training that they need and that some of the issues weren't just, you know, mistakes because people didn't understand what they were supposed to be doing. And so the department has gotten much better about adding some sort of a counseling or training or debriefing session with the involved officers to make sure that along with the formal consequence, there's some opportunity to grow and improve. And then there was one employee terminated prior to the completion of another case. We mentioned that, and I think that the other case gets talked about as well, but we mentioned that because, to the department's credit, it followed through with the investigation and did all of the fact-finding and made sure that it had a firm sense of what had happened. And that follow-through and addressing issues of officer performance, even when the specific involved officer isn't necessarily anybody that you're having to deal with anymore, again, that's kind of a best practice that's good to see the department engaging in. Back to you.
So we, as I mentioned, have a variety of different demographics that we share with you all related to what we're seeing. We have not, to date, I'm tracking from the start of our time here, noticed anything that would indicate that a certain type of policing is happening in any type of location. We track the ZIP code of the complaints. And so we've seen, of course, there were a large volume that were initiated in the ZIP code in which the police department is located. At times, that's because those were the internally generated complaints. But there is nothing in the ZIP code data that would indicate one area is more problematic than others in your city. And similarly, we did not note and have not noted any trends in the race of the complainant or the race of the complainant respective to the race of the officer who engaged in a potential misconduct. We had his, the race of the demographics of the complainants kind of ranged, three whites, seven Hispanic, one black, and two of an unidentified race. So again, nothing that's pointing us to be concerned about bias-based policing or location bias-based policing. And I think one of the things to note here is that our sample size is relatively small. So when I say there's no trends, it's not a statistically significant analysis to begin with, which is difficult from the start. But certainly, we'll keep an eye on that as we move forward and have a larger case volume. All right. Part of our scope of work also involves looking at closed litigation cases. So these would be cases that were brought, claims brought against the city of Las Cruces that involved one or more Las Cruces Police Department employees. We saw four of those cases close in this period. That involved a total of eight named employees. Two of these involved persons that were experiencing a mental health crisis. One of those was settled and one was dismissed. One involved the execution of an arrest warrant. And in that case, there was a summary judgment in favor of the Las Cruces Police Department. And then one involved a collision, an unfortunate collision between a pedestrian and a vehicle that was caused by a non-sworn employee crossing guard. That case was also settled. So now we get to what we love to do, which is present our findings for this particular period. As we started, I mentioned that we had one of the critical incidents, the officer-involved shooting from 2020. And this is our first opportunity to look at the way the department investigates a critical incident. So it's the first of these cases that we've been able to review. And I thought that both for the education of the members of the public who might be watching, as well as a refresher for folks here, it might be helpful to know the types of reviews that happen along with a critical incident. And so when a critical incident occurs here in your city, it triggers the Officer Involved Task Force. And this group is established in 2005, I believe, with a memorandum of understanding between a variety of local agencies. It is the state police, the university police, and the sheriff, as well as the Las Cruces Police Department. That team of investigators is reviewing the incident from a criminal perspective. So they are doing the criminal investigation as to whether the actions that occurred during the course of a critical incident were legal or illegal. There is also, of course, the involvement of the district attorney. And at the same time, the Las Cruces Police Department is initiating an internal, what is called an administrative investigation of that critical incident. So they are looking for any violations of policy, any misconduct that occurred. So different from the criminal aspect is the administrative aspect. And that is something that the department does internally. So the task force and Internal Affairs go to the scene of a critical incident, and they begin the investigation at that point. Once the on-scene investigation is complete, the criminal side, the task force, engages in their criminal investigation. And the administrative side typically is on pause. That is so that those two don't cross and contaminate each other. The case then is submitted to the DA for his review. What we see, what I mentioned at the top, is that sometimes that review process takes quite some time. In our experience, over many jurisdictions, we see that it can take months, sometimes years. In this case, it was a three-year process, which we felt was extraordinarily long. And so we've spoken to the chief about working with your agency partners and the district attorney to really try to bring that timeline in. So one of the questions, of course, is, okay, in the three years that this is all waiting and being investigated, what's going on, right? Now we have an incident that occurred, and three years have gone by. To the department's credit, they initiate almost immediately following a critical incident, a debrief and a review of that incident internally. They are looking for tactical concerns, equipment concerns, or department-wide concerns that can be remedied immediately, so that you don't wait that whole length of time before fixing something that might need fixing in the short term. At the completion of the DA's review, and when the DA provides his or her opinion on that case or finding on that case, then that administrative investigation reopens, resumes, and the officers will be held accountable from a department administrative perspective. So you see, there's a lot that happens in the course of these critical incidents, and we were fortunate that in this particular incident, we were able to review kind of the total package. We found both the task force and the department's investigations to be thorough. We advised, and the department has accepted, that the administrative investigation really be a holistic view of the critical incident. In this particular case, the administrative investigation was only looking at the use of force itself, so the actual action of shooting. And we felt there was space to look at a more, a broader view of that incident. Was the supervisor response appropriate? Were de-escalation tactics attempted? What was the medical aid rendered, et cetera? So there's pieces of that that we felt could have been flushed out and reviewed. At the end of the day, the findings would have been the same, but we like to see that kind of critical analysis happen in-house. And as I've mentioned, the department is doing that kind of critical analysis now. So again, we're looking at that time lag. That's a little frustrating. And now they are doing that moving forward.
So a couple more slides to summarize some of our findings from this report. One of the things that we have expressed interest in in the past and that the council has expressed interest in is the department's response to use-of-force incidents, maybe that don't rise to the level of a critical incident, officer-involved shooting, that kind of thing. And we get a small window into those when cases end up being referred into Internal Affairs, and it gives us some insight into how the department's normal supervisory review process works. One of the things that we noticed and certainly wanted to affirm is the development and kind of increased use of what the department calls a use-of-force cadre. This is an idea that Chief Story has been very instrumental in supporting and putting together. And it basically is a panel of department members who are experts in tactics and training and use-of-force techniques. And they will get together to discuss a case, a specific force incident that has been referred to them, and they do a very, very methodical analysis of it. And when necessary, if they have concerns about the legitimacy of the use of force in terms of compliance with training and policy, that they will then refer that to Internal Affairs. So we've seen a couple of the cases that have been the fruits of that process, and we were extremely impressed with the objectivity and the thoroughness and the rigor with which those cases are being looked at. And they weren't necessarily significant force cases. It's just the initial supervisor who looked at it had some concerns, referred it over to this group, and they were able to break down very specifically what some of the concerns and issues were. So we consider that to be a very positive development. The second bullet on this slide relates to interviews of subject officers. That is a kind of a recurring theme of ours. It's, to us, in many ways, it's one of the critical elements of the whole process because it's really the officer's opportunity or the employee's opportunity to explain himself or herself. And really, you know, potentially, it's one of the key learning moments of the whole experience because I know that that can be a stressful thing for officers to go through. We really try to emphasize the objectivity and thoroughness of that process, and we will, that's always something that we're going to zero in on. In this case, one of the things that we have talked to the chief about and recommended overtly is going ahead and actually doing the interviews in cases where the evidence is not definitive, as the slide says. There is a certain, not every case needs to have the subject officers be interviewed. There are some, it's, the evidence is very definitive because of the body worn camera, and there's really no need to proceed any further. But when it looks like there has been misconduct, or when we're not exactly sure one way or the other, we're always going to advocate in favor of bringing the officer and getting answers to any questions that you're, even if you're 95% sure, take that extra time to interview the officer. There's a tension there between, you know, the resource and the efficiency versus the thoroughness and completeness, but we're always going to encourage the department to lean in the direction of interviewing people as a key component of these cases. And then a couple of things that we noticed in this, in this last group. Ideally, it's going to be a higher-ranking employee. We had a case where an investigator was interviewing a supervisor, and that dynamic was sort of inherently awkward. We thought the investigator did a professional job, but they're just in a paramilitary organization, it probably makes more sense when a supervisor is involved to have a peer or superior officer doing the interview. So the objectivity and thoroughness is something that we're going to take a look at. Again, to the department's credit, it's going to record those interviews. They're going to be, we watch the video and the audio, and we get a real sense. And when you think about public skepticism about the effectiveness of the internal review process, this idea that they're just covering up for officers or glossing over misconduct and not taking these things seriously, these interviews are really one of the places where the objectivity and effectiveness of the process is going to be most apparent. So we put a lot of emphasis into it. We have several recommendations in this report and in the past, and the department has been responsive, but it continues to be an area that we're going to be paying attention to. And then, again, under procedural recommendations or observations, one of the things that we have advocated and that the department has taken some big steps forward in pursuing is an alternative complaint resolution model. And that basically just means for a low-level allegation of misconduct, rather than having the department do its traditional investigation and then send the complaint in, you know, a three-line letter at the end of it, telling them what the outcome was and having that be the end of it, there are a lot of jurisdictions that if the circumstances align and the complaint really is an issue where getting the officer and the member of the public who made the complaint together with a neutral third party and just kind of talking, clarifying misunderstandings, explaining perspectives, we have found that to be a very constructive exercise in a lot of places. And several of the complaints that we've looked at, the complainants are very sincere, but they're just, they only have part of the story, or they're seeing it through their lens and not getting it from the officer's perspective. And sometimes, again, the department is doing a perfectly appropriate investigation. They're reaching a perfectly appropriate conclusion that there was no misconduct, but we're sympathetic that that's not very satisfying to the complainant who doesn't really understand the mechanics or the rationale behind the decision. And this model would be an alternative to that, that, again, we have seen work. The department has put together a very detailed draft policy about how it might work, and we've had the opportunity to weigh in on that. We actually were talking with some department folks this morning about the concept and how it's coming along, and we will be interested to see if progress gets made on it because we think it's a good outlet for some of the issues that we see. And then this is the last time we're going to trade, I promise. Teresa, back to you.
So several of the cases in this period involved an individual who was experiencing a mental health crisis, varying degrees of that, as we are well aware. And the biggest takeaway for us is that there are so many different models and practices around how law enforcement engages with these individuals who are experiencing crisis. We have seen that this department is responsive by providing the lightest touch possible. They recently implemented a general order that reflects the best practices that we've seen nationwide around engaging with individuals who are experiencing a crisis, all the way including to the point of making a determination if law enforcement is even the appropriate response. And certainly, your city has done quite a lot with respect to providing supportive resources to either divert law enforcement calls or to provide services after a law enforcement call, or even during, with your MIH program, with the LIGHT program project. And so we looked at these incidents through those lenses of whether those types of light touches were reflected in the way that officers responded. And we saw that they were, very much so. The important piece of this, of course, is when an incident turns and that law enforcement response moves from someone experiencing a mental health crisis to someone who has now engaged in criminal activity, we are looking to see that turn be very carefully evaluated. If any force is used, what types of force? Were those appropriate? Were all of the steps leading up to it used appropriately? And so really, the takeaway for us is these incidents happen. Sometimes, law enforcement must be involved. And what was that, what did that involvement look like? Was it appropriate? So for us, really encouraging the department to review these very critically, constantly, to make sure that they are gathering any lessons learned from them. We also saw, as Steve mentioned earlier, that directed training is occurring much more frequently. The department has retained a police legal expert. That individual is contracted to provide more frequent trainings. One of the really interesting and creative ways that they're doing training is a bathroom briefing flyer. It's a really simple flyer that's posted up in bathrooms and locker rooms with kinds of concepts that you might want to have just readily available, like, when can I use my taser? And list it out, you know, the appropriate circumstances for that. So we thought that that was a really creative way to continue to provide training on an ongoing basis and in many different ways. Finally, as I mentioned, we were concerned to see that there were several cases around release of information and information used inappropriately. So as I mentioned, the department has really tightened up those guardrails on how to access information. We also saw a handful of cases that involved challenging... We also saw a handful of cases that involved challenging interpersonal relationships with individuals within the department, out of the department, former employees. And to his credit, Chief Story identified that pretty readily right away. And he drafted and provided for our review of fraternization policy, which really lists out the types of relationships that are appropriate among LCPD personnel and the actions that one must take if one is choosing to engage in those relationships. And we hope that's going to clear up some of the interpersonal issues that are, that we've seen in these complaints. And finally, as you are all very well aware, in your January council meeting, you graciously approved four, up to four, community meetings so that we can begin to have a more robust engagement with your community. And we are really looking forward to hosting those. The meeting times and the dates will be coming in the next few months. We will be coordinating with the city's infrastructure to be able to have those be facilitated, broadcast, and announced so that we can really start to hear from community. And we appreciate that addition to our work.
So then, the last thing I would say, and certainly, we welcome any questions that the council has. This presentation is, as you know, a distillation of a public report that I think is 150 pages long in its entirety. So first of all, gold star to anybody who made it through the whole thing. But secondly, we wanted to make the public aware of that, remind them that this is available. And I think one of the key features of the model here in Las Cruces with regard to oversight is the whole idea of transparency and giving a window into processes that generally have been confidential and kind of secluded from a lot of public scrutiny or exposure. And the model that Las Cruces chose, the whole reporting feature is really a key aspect of that. So we do the individual case reports along the way as the cases come in, and we process them over the course of the six-month period. And then we compile all of those individual case drafts and then provide some overview which kind of tracks what we were presenting today. But again, we encourage anybody from the public to please do review that report, which is available, to the extent that you have interest and want to learn more about these processes. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions from Council of Flotus?
Thank you for a very good report, good report card for our LCPD. So on page 14, or, excuse me, page 15, would you please explain what directed training means? You said it was occurring more frequently, and there was also, or maybe that was on page 14, and then there was release of information and fraternization. That one, what does that mean? They can't be friends? They can't socialize with each other? Can't talk to each other? What does that mean?
So, to your first question, the directed training would be if an officer, if through the course of investigation, it was determined that misconduct occurred? And sometimes, even if misconduct didn't occur, but they identify that the officer might need a little refresher on a certain topic, those officers are directed by command to attend a certain type of training. It can be as simple as perhaps you need to go to a class on report writing so that you can be a better report writer. And the officer will take that class, it will be logged in their training record, and hopefully, that issue is remediated through that directed training. Fraternization is really, as Steve mentioned, it's a, the structure of this organization is such that there are ranks. And so if a supervisor is having a relationship, and I'm meaning of a romantic nature typically, with someone who is a subordinate or vice versa, that can create some challenges for the reporting structure, for assignments, could indicate, you know, or give the indication of preferential treatment and so on. And so, policy around that really essentially is telling those members who wish to engage in those types of relationships, of course, of their choosing, the types of reporting that they have to do. So to let, for example, command know, we're in a relationship, I should not be reporting to this person. They should not be within my direct chain of command, for example.
So that person or those persons involved would be reassigned or whatever?
It would be up to the department how to manage that most appropriately.
I watch Blue Bud's and I...
You get the sense of it.
And, what's it, Edith, Jenko, and whatever, they're always together. But at any rate, you also mentioned promising new developments. So are those, you saw that there were promising new developments insofar as the findings in procedural matters or just generally?
Yeah, that was referring to the alternative complaint resolution model that Steve spoke of. So to us, that's really something that is a new development for the department and one that we think will really pay off both for the community as well as for the department.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? Yes, Councilor Graham.
Thanks so much. Great to see you again. I think your first report was one of my first council meetings, so we all kind of came on at the same time, and it's been interesting to watch this, to watch this develop. And one thing that I always do like to point out, if it doesn't show up in the slideshow, is that you share in the larger report numbers of external complaints versus calls for service, and it's always such an illuminating number. So for this six-month period, 85,908 calls for service. That was, so in half a year, almost 86,000 calls for service with 12 external complaints. So I always think that, you know, sometimes it can be overwhelming when you're reading everything after everything after everything, and it's so illustrative to see, this is a vanishingly small number of calls for service that end up with these kind of complaints. And yeah, overall, I just think, I think this report more than any is starting to reflect the shifts in culture that I think we've all been really happy to see. And just want to shout out our leadership. Thank you so much for all that you're doing as we, as we try to grow and evolve. So, thank you.
Yes, anyone?
Yeah, I have another question. So there is a lot of intermittent training. I know there's a law firm that comes down, and in fact, they're in Los Angeles. And how often is that, and how does that work with what OIR does?
I see the chief is making his way to the podium, so I'm going to defer to him. We were actually talking about this this morning.
Yeah, because I think that that kind of training that they do reflects a lot of the improvements here. I might be wrong.
Mayor, Councilor Flotus, Jeremy Story, Police Chief. When it comes to training, that's a very broad topic, so I'll narrow it. I mean, it's happening weekly, really with briefing training, it's happening daily. When it comes to legal training, which I think is what you're asking about, the firm you're talking about, we brought in from Southern California for specific classes, but our New Mexico attorney that we retained is doing stuff all the time. So he's teaching things like report writing, search and seizure update, his regular search and seizure class, use of force. He's taking part in scenarios, he's doing briefing trainings, he's doing the bathroom bulletins. And so we are already seeing the fruits of that, and in a year or two, it's really going to show how much of a benefit that's had. Because it does take time, it's a lot of information, but I don't know that we can increase the frequency much more without completely breaking the system. He's pushing, we're pushing him pretty hard and the staff and the supervisors pretty hard to get all this training done.
And how long have you had that outside firm do their training? And I think the fire department is also involved with that, right?
Not for the legal side of things, but I've been bringing him in for classes for three years, but we've only had him for less than a year, probably about six, seven months as an actual contract, where he's doing, the frequency's a lot more.
Great. Thank you, Chief. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Chief, before you sit down, I just, really quick for you, my other one's just a comment, and then I have another question for you. Kalia, Colleen, what is it?
Kalia.
Kalia. Can you give us an update on the certification process?
Yes, and I don't know, do we have a percentage by chance? No. We are making our way through the proofs right now. And just for context, we've been accredited by the Municipal League for the past 10, 11 years. So it's not like this is the first time seeking accreditation. Kalia is just kind of the next level, and it is more cumbersome. But my guess would be approximately 50% through proofs. We have dedicated more people to that section and just changed the accreditation manager. And so that delayed things a little bit, but I think it's going to speed things up in the long run.
Okay.
So, I'm hopeful.
Thank you. I was just curious, thank you. On the, this is also curiosity for either of you, on the report, the LCPD management response, is that usually from Chief or, that is? Okay. Thank you. And then, I guess I just wanted to, oh wait, no, one question before I have a comment. On the community meetings, will you be reporting to us in a similar manner? Okay.
Yeah, the intent is to hopefully combine the community sessions with a report like this, so that we would report to you, we would meet with community, we would be able to report out back to you about what community might be concerned with. So it really is, we're looking to have it be a pretty fluid process where this all comes together.
Perfect. Thank you.
Absolutely.
And then I just wanted to say, in relation to the mental health crises calls, that I think for, you know, the mission originally for me, for bringing you all on, was around accountability and transparency, but I think more and more, I also feel like it's a lot of policy learnings for us as well. I think even as I hear Chief Smith with the fire department talking about how much their field is changing, how more and more they're responding to behavioral health calls, we've been having a big conversation about fentanyl and what that does to people's bodies and minds, and the reality that both fire and police are sort of the front lines of that. And I think, for me, it's important to hear these things too because I think it gives us an important insight on what are, it's not just their jobs to handle this, right? Like, this is really a community effort, and so we have to understand also what the resources is that they need. I think Project LIGHT has been transformative, frankly, and I think we have a lot of work to do around opioid crisis and responding to mental crises in that way. But I do just want to just reiterate my gratitude towards you all and to the police department for collaborative effort that I think has brought about a lot of important policy changes, and I think a lot more to come as well, especially when it relates to this session. So thank you.
Anyone else on council? No, well, just want to say thank you. I have to echo what Councilor Graham said. I've seen some of these reports come, this is the fifth one. I see the progress, I see the work in progress going in, and the partnership, the collaborating looks well, very good. And so, thank you. I just want to ask Chief Story or staff if they wanted to add anything else on this presentation, on their perspective on the internal, how it's going.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll give kind of my big picture with OIR, and we have many conversations that we don't always agree on everything, we go back and forth. And the way I see that, I've given this metaphor before, is, you know, when a tree, when you plant a tree and you're trying to make it stronger, you know, you stake it so that the wind doesn't uproot it. But you don't want to push too hard because then the tree either would be uprooted or wouldn't grow. But if they're, if you stake it so tight that they cannot move, has no pressure, the tree doesn't get strong either. Hopefully, this makes sense. So what I'm saying is that pressure and some forcing you to think about things differently ultimately does make you stronger as long as it's within balance, and OIR has done that for us. I think if you zoom out for this entire period, you'll see a lot of positive change that resulted because of our relationship with OIR. That might not have happened otherwise. So I'm still appreciative of this relationship, and I actually enjoy the conversations we have, even when we don't agree. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Was there anyone from the public, anybody in the members of the public that had any comments? Okay, not seen anyone? Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget review.
Some tall people were up here. Well, good afternoon, Mayor. Council for the record, my name's Leanne DeMooch, I'm your finance director. Jacqueline Rubikova is your grant and budget manager. She is out sick today, so I'm filling in for her. This is a team event, so I will be doing my part, and then I will be turning it over to Josie Trevino, who is our interim deputy director, and Barbara Benkoma, which, as you know, is our chief administrative officer. So as the mayor was saying, this is a recap. We typically like to have two work sessions right after the budget retreat, and then, of course, we'll have another one in April, and I'll give you the schedule in a few minutes. What we're going to be covering, the journey continues, and what we're going to be working on is giving you a little bit of a brief recap of the budget retreat, actually focusing on day one. The mayor and council was given an opportunity to tell us about what your goals are, what your vision is, what your priorities are for the next fiscal year. Mr. Peely led that, and so we did, we listened to you, of course we do, but we took lots of notes. And so we want to sort of gather all those notes together. And what we want to do with this is, we want to show you how actually the vision that you're seeing or that you have is actually building into our own for our FY25 budget. So we're very excited about that. Then we're going to talk about the Tellshore Fund, the cannabis excise tax, and then the opioid settlement as well. So these are all different funds that we did not talk about at the budget retreat, and these are opportune times for you to give us some feedback on how you'd like to see us use these funds, and just give you an overview of what is available in these funds as well. So I wanted to start with giving you, especially since we have a couple of new faces up on the dais, talking a little bit about Elevate Las Cruces. I will honestly tell you how we budget is, we take Elevate. Elevate Las Cruces, which is our 20-year comprehensive plan, it gives us a long-term vision for sustainable growth and transformation for over the next 20 years. So we use this as a tool to help us with building our budget every single year. And within Elevate, there are three themes, and I wanted to just briefly go over those themes because then you'll see how we wove them into your recap that you gave us from day one of the budget retreat. So the first one is community environment. So when you see the, if you look in Elevate Las Cruces, mine is well-used. Got tabs everywhere and use it a lot when I'm doing the budgeting. And so this is what Elevate looks like, the book, and so in there are the three themes. And when you see the theme CE, that is for community environment. And these are some of the actions or tasks or visions that you see under that CE, community environment. The next theme is community prosperity, and these are some of the tasks or goals that are under community prosperity. And these are some of the tasks or goals that are under community prosperity. And then your next one is CL, which is community livability. And this is a more bigger one. It has public safety, arts and cultural, public health, neighborhoods, parks and recreation. So there are your three themes for Elevate Las Cruces. Also wanted to go into our city strategic plan, because in the matrix that I'm going to be showing you, I'm going to be showing you the priorities that you gave us, and I want to show you how they fit into Elevate, how they fit into our strategic plan, and how they're actually fitting into the departments as well. And by the way, report card early, we did really great. So under our city strategic plan themes, we have six: community prosperity, education and community services, environmental sustainability, capital improvements and infrastructure, communication involvement, follow-up, and of course, public safety. And then I wanted, I just took one side, because also in our strategic plan, we talk about the employees and also the council's values, the city values. And not that these were really great values, because we have a poster that comes from GFOA on ethics and what our values are. And a lot of these, if not all of these values, are in with our budget and also with our accounting reporting from GFOA. Of course, as you see, being fiscal responsible, professionalism, respect, and transparency. So here's how we did it. So here's the matrix, the budget retreat. These are your council priorities. And as you can see, Jaclyn put a little note on the bottom, says, "This is not an exhaustive list." There were other things that were discussed that day, as you well know. And so these are the things that we pulled out of your discussion. And of course, I'm not going to go through every single one, but there's four columns in there. And as you can see, the first column is Elevate Las Cruces. So this is how your priority fits into Elevate, okay? I did not point out who said who. These are a mixture of the mayor and all of the council together. And a lot of these, you said, all of you said, you know, like public safety, having a safer city. All of you said that during that day as well. So we just didn't tag it on who actually said it at the meeting. But as you can see, the CL, the CP, you know, community livability, community prosperity. You can see how all of these on this page are in our city strategic plan. And you can also see, when we say both, by the way, that means that not only is it budgeted in operation for the department, but it's also budgeted in the CIP as well. So that's what both, that's what we mean by that. If it only says yes in CIP, then it's only in the CIP. It's not in operations. But if it only has a yes, then it's only for operations. Sorry, I meant to put that little caveat in there. So as you can see, I'm taking like downtown revitalization. It falls under community prosperity, the four being the goal that's in our Elevate book. And then it is in the city strategic plan. And yes, it is budgeted in the CIP, pretty much probably under the TID, because that's what downtown revitalization is. Safer, safer community. You can see it hits a lot of the community livability, the city strategic plan, and then also the department request. Next priorities, I think we have about four slides of priorities. We got a lot of information from you that day. Market jobs, events, transportation. Transportation is very much into Elevate. As you can see, it's community livability, the library master plan, the animal service center of Mesia Valley, as you can see, is not in Elevate, not in the city strategic plan, and it is not a departmental request. The animal service center is a joint power agreement. It is a JPA. It is not a department. So it is in our budget as a expense that we give to help out our portion to the animal service center, but it's not in any particular department. And it is not listed in our city strategic plan or in Elevate. So I just wanted to point that out. That's why it's blank all the way across. Sustainability, this was mostly reducing plastic pollution. As you can see, community environment, it is in the city strategic plan. And then the East Mesa, which is in the CIP. The police oversight is in the Elevate. Going down to real-time crime center is in Elevate under community livability. It is in the city strategic plan, and it is both in the CIP and in their operating as well. I will say a little on the boxing gym. I just found out just a few minutes ago that it is budgeted in a department. We're going to double-check on that. Yeah, we're going to double-check. Okay. Under our last slide, under the MRA, it is in our Elevate Las Cruces. It is in the strategic business plan, and yes, it is budgeted in one of the departments. The reason pay increases, that was mentioned at the budget retreat, however, it is, you will see what we are estimating or what we are proposing, I should say, at the April budget meeting for the pay increases. At this time, we are, we do have something in there for pay increases. However, it has not gone through venting with the city manager and with the ACMs and with our CAO as well. And then, of course, affordable housing as well. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Trevino, and she's going to discuss Tellshore Fund.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Josie Trevino. I'm the Finance Intron Deputy Director. And I will do a brief overview of the Tellshore Fund and Cannabis Excise Tax. So we'll start with the Tellshore Fund. The Tellshore Fund, as stated in the title, is a restricted fund. Now, what this means is that the fund can only be spent for specific purposes, as stated in the resolution. In this case, it was zero five one twenty-eight. Sorry, I didn't read the whole definition, but you can read what it says here. It's "to support the continued physical, mental, developmental, emotional, and social well-being, safety, and housing needs of City of Las Cruces residents, and to improve the lives of sick, indigent, or low-income people of the City of Las Cruces." Here, we see the market value for the Tellshore Fund, and this is in millions. So what market value, it simply means that the amount of money that we would get if we were to sell. So the latest information we have is of December 2023. And for the last four quarters, it has remained pretty consistent. And I'll give you some time to look at this, and then I'll move on. Okay, and here we have what was budgeted for fiscal year '24. And from that, what is requested for fiscal year '25. So we'll start with the first one, Pedrana Apartments. The budget is three million. Given that this will not be spent in fiscal year '24, it is carried over from fiscal year '24 to fiscal year '25. So you'll see these two right here are the same amount. You see an asterisk. It just means it's a carryover from fiscal year '24. For Three Sisters Apartments, 2.4 million was budgeted, and it's projected nothing will be used. So we're going to roll over the full amount to fiscal year '25. For fiscal year '24, there was 870,000 budgeted for a transit grand match. Of that, an estimated forty-nine has been used, so the balance that's going to carry over, it's 817,000. Then we move to Mesia Valley Community of Hope for Mano y Mano. And the budget for fiscal year '24 was 543,000. And the fiscal year '25 request is 603,000. Next is Health Public Services. The budget for fiscal year '24 and the fiscal year '25 request remain the same at 600,000. We had a Resolution 24 Dodge Rule 31, and that was for land purchase at nine nine, on Amador Avenue. And that was 438,000. That was a one-time, non-recurring expense, therefore the fiscal year '25 request is zero. The next is Casa de Peregrinos, approved through a resolution, and this was due to the increase of food. There was an inflation, so request was made for fiscal year '24 for $100,000. Again, this is a non-recurring expense, therefore the FY25 is a zero request. We next have Mesia Valley Community of Hope. It's the Homeless Opportunity Program. And the fiscal year '24 and the fiscal year '25 remain the same of 75,000. So the total budgeted for fiscal year '24 was eight million. And FY25, the request is 6.6 million. The difference between one and another is some of these are requested during the year in resolutions. So where FY25, there's a request, it doesn't mean that there may not be one later on, as these other ones were resolutions that were brought on through the year. We next go to Cannabis Excise Tax. This is unrestricted funds. What this means is there hasn't been any special purposes appropriated to be used for these funds. Pretty much you can use them for anything you wish. That is, of course, approved by government accounting standards. So this applies to retail sales of non-medical cannabis products. The sales of cannabis started on April 1st, 2022, and the tax is currently at 12%. There are some possible uses that are going to be presented, and those are MRAs or Real-Time Crime Center. I'm not sure if we're going to present them, but these are some possible uses where we have, that have been brought up. So the total revenue as of April 1st, 2022, received is about 1.5 million. We're projecting ending the fiscal year at another 300,000, which would bring the revenues up to 1.8 million from April 2022 to the end of June 2023. With this, I will now hand it over to Barbara.
Thank you, Josie. Barbara Bencomo for the record. So the other source of revenue we're going to just highlight today is the opioid settlement funds that we have started to receive. Those were settlements with distributors, manufacturers, and retailers. The city's portion is anticipated to be just under $10 million. And I've also indicated what the county and Sunland Park will receive, so you get an idea for our entire region, the funds that we will be receiving. They do cover a seventeen-year period, and I'll show you in just a sec the amount that we have received to date, and then what we expect to receive over the course of that seventeen-year period. The use of the funds is governed by a settlement agreement, what we refer to as Schedule Exhibit E, excuse me, that outlines the use of funds to address the harms of opioid use disorder. I'll go over some of those examples as well. And then the funds are held separately. They are required to be held separately so that we can accurately track what we're receiving, reconcile that against the anticipated amounts that we should be receiving, and then we can report transparently on what's being spent from these particular funds for what purposes. So this chart shows for each classification of defendant, whether they're distributors or particular entities, what the settlement amount is in total. That's the blue column. And then what we have received to date. You'll see that for some of the defendants, we have received the entire amount of settlement payment, for example, from J&amp;J. For others, we have yet to receive, we've received only a portion. For example, Walgreens is slated to pay over $4.2 million. We've received 165,000, again, according to the schedule of distributions that we're going to receive over time. So we have received $3.4 million to date. And again, the anticipated amount over the entire period is just under $10 million. Again, we're going, we do track this very closely, and this is reported on our website as well, so that folks can see what we are receiving. I mentioned the Exhibit E allowable uses for the funds. They really fall under three broad categories: treatment and prevention, and other uses. The treatment includes things like medication-assisted treatment, improvements and investments in the criminal justice system for prevention, programs to address over-prescribing misuse and overdoses. And then in the other category, items like training and research. When we went through the allowable uses, and I'm not going to read all of these, but we wanted to look at what some examples might be, and in particular, some that might be related to things that our departments, our programs, might be able to utilize the funds for. So you just see some examples of these, including media and public education campaigns, youth-focused programs for prevention, et cetera. So the timeline for when we will be further discussing expenditures for these funds is shown on this slide. As you know, we established the Opioid Advisory Council last summer. That is the group that is working with NMSU Crimson Research to develop a needs assessment for our community to understand what the recommended uses would be to address the needs of our community. That committee includes people from the state as well, so that we can coordinate and not duplicate efforts between the state, the county, and the city in the use of the funds. So we are underway right now with Crimson Research that includes interactions and community input for the needs assessment. Once that study is completed and NMSU provides the data, the committee, or the council, sorry, the Opioid Advisory Council, will be reviewing and making recommendations based on that community needs assessment. And then those recommendations will be provided separately to the city council and the county commission. That's separately, because the city is receiving its own distribution of settlement funds, as is the county. So the governing bodies of both the city and the county ultimately make the decisions on how the funds shall be spent. That might address the recommendations that are made from the council. Or of course, your decisions could be informed by other information. Our departments might also propose use of funds as well. But you will have, hopefully, all the information you need to make some good decisions about the use of these funds. And then, of course, once your decisions are made, we'll come back with a budget adjustment in order to expend those funds. We'll be developing implementation plans and tracking and reporting mechanisms. So right now, while we are receiving funds into our budget, we don't have any expenditures budgeted because of the timing for the recommendations that'll come back to you. So you will see those as budget adjustments as we enter the FY25 fiscal year. All right, and I'll turn it back over to Leanne for next steps.
Mayor, Council for the record, Leanne DeMooch, your Finance Director. Just to give you what the next steps are, we have our next work session and public hearing. We're going to do them one in the same. Sometimes we have a separate public hearing. We'll have it like in the morning or lunchtime. But this year, we're going to do the work session and the public hearing at the same time. So it's just one presentation. And we used to do that a few years ago, and then we separated. And we didn't actually have a whole lot of people that would show up to the public hearing, so we just decided to put them together. We will have your budget books to you approximately two weeks before that April 22nd meeting. I'm trying to shoot around April the 8th. To have those books, you should be, they should be on your desk. We'll hand-deliver those to you. So that way you can take notes, go through them, and so we'll have that. We will also have the electronic version as well. We have to have that per the charter up on our website at the library and also with our city clerks. So we'll have all of that available even on the website as well. We're working with PIO to put that up there. And then we will be bringing a resolution, one for, to adopt the budget, and also another resolution to adopt the CIP as well. one for, to adopt the budget, and also another resolution to adopt the CIP as well. With that, discussion time. If you have any questions, we're going to be taking down lots of notes. We want to hear from you. If there's something specific that you want to talk about with the funds that we discussed today, we're here to answer your questions. And if we don't know, I promise you, I can find out and shoot you that information. So.
Thank you, Leanne. Any questions? Oh, Counselor Flores.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Ms. Demushe and Mr. Trevino. I have a question for Mr. Trevino.
Sure.
Thank you for your presentation. I have a question that goes to the services of the Tellshore Fund and the entities that receive the benefit of that fund. And I have a constituent who asked me how it was that the different 501(c)(3)'s, the recipients, were determined, and whether those that do fall under the categories listed, they all go a lot to health and whatnot. But how exactly, how is it publicized? And how often is it publicized? And is there a call, for lack of a better word, out to 501(c)(3)'s to apply? And then, how are they selected?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Flores, Josie Trevino, I will call Natalie Green, as these are funds that go through her area. She walked out. Okay.
So, Mayor, Counselor Flores, Leanne Demushe for the record. It's my understanding that she puts out an RFP, Request for Proposals. Those proposals come in. I think she has an advisory committee that goes through these proposals. And then, she takes those funds and then she distributes them to, you know, she has the $600,000, and she tries to, I think, fill as much of that money as she can.
And how, did she come in? Oh, she's not here. But my question goes to, who makes the final determination, and how is that reached? You said there's an advisory committee, so that advisory committee is only, it's not a directive, it's an advise. So, who ultimately makes the decision? And does only one person make that decision, or is there?
No, Mayor, Counselor Flores, this advisory committee, I think, you know, advises on what they should. She actually brings to council a resolution. And in that resolution, it lists to all the proposals and how much they award. So, at that time, you have the opportunity to, you know, to say yes or no, even at that time, at the resolution.
Yeah, yeah. I'm aware of that. But who, who all, the designees of the recipients are taken from a pool? Or anyone who qualifies is given the money, or the, you know, the received fund money? How, how is it that, so if there's X amount of dollars, and then there's 10 applications, they're reviewed. And once they're reviewed, who determines who is going to receive the money? And how, how are the amounts factored in, all that sort of stuff? It's a mystery to me, and I haven't been able to get a clear answer, so, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Flores, so there is a Health-Related Public Services Program Guide with the application, so we'll make sure you get a copy of that. And it has a step-by-step process on the allocation methodology. It is a competitive process conducted every other year. And so, we are in the middle of that process right now. There, off the top of my head, I want to say there was about 15 to 18 applicants. Those applications are reviewed by the Health and Human Services Advisory Committee, and they present to that committee and answer any questions. And then, that committee votes and makes a recommendation to council on who should be funded. And that recommendation meeting is either this week? I think it's this week, maybe tomorrow. I saw the agenda go out, and there's a staff liaison that monitors that committee.
And insofar as the applications by the 501(c)(3)'s that are applying for those funds, who reviews them? And how is it determined, how, who makes the ultimate decision? I know you, you say we make the ultimate decision, but what we get is what has been narrowed down at your level. So, we don't get, we don't get the bulk of the applicants. We don't review and weigh which entities will be receiving Tellshore funds.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Flores, the Health and Human Services Advisory Committee is made up of seven members appointed by each counselor on the dais, including the mayor. And so, it's your representatives who are appointed to that board that review those applications. And they see all the applications and make those recommendations to council for final adoption.
Okay. So, but we, the council, never see those applications. We just get the whoever, however. But you make the ultimate decision, don't you, Ms. Green?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Flores, the Health and Human Services makes the recommendation, because they view, review the applications. This year's process, I myself have not seen the applications. I have another staff member who supervises that process, but I do know it's the similar organizations that have previously applied.
So, when the decision is made to allocate monies or to fund the certain 501(c)(3)'s, who determines the amount that is distributed to them?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Flores, the council has an investment strategy that they adopt every two to four years. This council adopted one, I believe, about two years ago that set a budgeted amount of 600,000 for the next four fiscal years. And so, we're now in year three of that four-year allocation. So, it's set by this body, and this body also adopts the allocation process, and so.
Yes, but the allocation process that we get is what has been finalized by you or the advisory committee. Is that correct?
There's two. One is the final recommendations of who should be funded every budget year, but the overall program policy determinations is also set by this body. So, this council adopts an application and a policy guide that, that outlines how the program is to be managed and run.
Okay, so, do we get that now? Or, because you say something's coming to us soon, so when do we get that?
I can send you a copy of that resolution that adopted that process.
No, I, see, my, my question is, and perhaps I'm not framing it correctly. My, my question is, who makes the ultimate decision as to where the funds will be going? That 600,000, and you have different, $600,000, and you have different entities applying.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Flores, you'll make that decision on your May 2nd meeting.
Okay. How does your committee, for lack of a better word, your committee, reach its, you know, their recommendations? And that's what I would like to see, quite frankly. And the reason is because there are 501(c)(3)'s that feel that they have not been justly served. So, that is my concern, and it made me think about the process and not really knowing. So, what you present to us is basically your decision, because we don't get to see the final determinations by the advisory committee. And they're only advisory. So, you have, you would be the person perhaps making the decision as to who's going to get the money. And then, we get to rubber-stamp that. And that's pretty much how it's been coming.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Flores, so on the competitive years, staff puts out a notice of funding opportunity to the public, and it's advertised both on our website and through the newspaper. It, it's a call for applications. And then, agencies submit what's called the Letter of Intent to Apply, and they submit a competitive application with questions and information that's, that's been adopted by council. So, council set those questions of, what's the objective of your program? How much money are you asking for, X, Y, Z? There's some mandatory requirements, like having a financial audit. Again, those are all policy decisions that were set by the committee and council who adopted the application process. And then, that process is managed by staff. And so, the agencies go through the submission process. They're reviewed for their audits, their fiscal soundness, their program requirements, meeting the definition that's also adopted by council. And then, all of that is, is given to the committee.
How often does the advisory committee meet?
They meet about four times per year. It's a pretty regulated process, and so they're in the middle of that process right now.
And how many, just generally speaking, how many 501(c)(3)'s apply for those funds?
It can vary from year to year. Typically, for the $600,000 pot, we see about 20 agencies apply. In the alternate years is our CBPG, Public Services Funding, and we only see about six to seven apply for that process, because it's a much more rigorous financial commitment to run a community development block grant.
And then, what determines the, what determines the allocation of those funds? What facts, what factors are used in determining whether that particular 501(c)(3) meets the criteria? Or what is the criteria?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Flores, there are, there's a weighted scoring system that the committee has as part of the questions. Off the top of my head, I can't tell you the specifics, but they, they weight anywhere from five to 20 points in each, each category. They calculate all of their scores, and they meet, and I believe it's this week, they will meet at a public meeting. Those scores will be presented to both the nonprofits and members of the public. And so, you'll see all the scores, and you can see the committee talk out their recommendations, and they'll vote on a final recommendation to come to council for adoption.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Green.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, thank you. Counselor McClure.
Yeah, I had a quick question about, so, we're getting disbursements, and so is the county. And I thought to myself, each body will have its own priorities, but is there ever a way that we would overlap on projects and kind of have a sense of that? And if we do, do we want to rework the wheel? Or is there things that we could benefit, that both of us could benefit at the same time?
Yes, Mayor and Counselor McClure, Barbara Bencomo again for the record. You know, there are so many potential programs or mechanisms for utilizing these funds that I could definitely see that there would be potentially a category of expenditures that, say, both the city and the county would want to undertake, but in a coordinated manner, whether it's education, prevention, et cetera. I know that the state has already been very specific on what they are spending their funds on, and a lot of it is related to treatment. So, again, we would just be mindful of not wanting to duplicate some of the uses of the funds, but we certainly would want to leverage it if we think that both entities could benefit from whatever recommended uses the, the council brings forward, and then the commission and the city council adopt.
Who would be the one kind of coordinating with the county at that center?
So, right now, I am the liaison to the Opioid Settlement Advisory Council. We have a staff member who is at the county level, funded by Vital Strategies, which is our nonprofit partner in addressing the harms of opioid use disorder. And that person is coordinating, for example, all of our council meetings, the documentation, resources required, the NMSU Crimson Research data collection process, et cetera. So, we do have some support at the county level for this. And it was the county that reached out to us to ask for a joint committee so that we could move forward in a coordinated manner. So, we are just trying at this point to make sure that we bring forth options for you all that are beneficial for our entire community. I think that once the recommended uses are agreed upon by both governing bodies, as I mentioned, we need to have an implementation plan. So, then that could potentially involve other city resources, depending on the use of funds. So, I'm afraid the answer to your question is, is it depends at this point on what the, the uses will be. But we're certainly trying to keep all, you know, manner of possible uses available to the, to the community, and keeping in mind that we want to be as transparent and accountable as possible. That's why I mentioned that we will also be regularly reporting this out as part of our transparency efforts on our website.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for the presentation. I have a couple of questions, but just before I get to there, I did want to just gently push back on the idea that one staff person decides who the Tellshore Fund grants go to. The committee is our committee. The Health and Human Services Committee currently has a couple of vacancies. And it's my understanding that the committee often struggles with quorum issues. And so, I would highly encourage each of you to check in with your person and make sure that this is something they are interested in doing, because if there's any concern that maybe one person is making those decisions, really, it comes down to this committee. And if this committee is not engaged, then it does leave a lot of that work to a couple of members of the committee. I know that I picked my person very intentionally for this committee, and that they're very engaged members. So, I would just encourage you all to check in with each of your appointed folks and revisit their interest in, in being part of that committee and being part of this process that I think, honestly, at one point, I think it should have a review. I think it puts a lot of burden on nonprofits, and we should consider looking at it. But I did just want to note that I was not comfortable with, with some of that conversation. Just on the Tellshore, actually, well, Natalie's down, down here. There was a program on there that I think, yes, this one, the very bottom, the homeless opportunities. I think it's outreach, Natalie, but can you talk more about this?
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Potembencomo, that is the homeless outreach program. It's our mobile street outreach program. So, it's two staff members that go out and encounter folks where they're living across the community, make sure that they have things they need, that they're accessing services, that they're meeting with housing navigators. And then, oftentimes, they assist them in gently moving to other areas when they're in places where they don't need to be. And so, they collaborate very intentionally with our Manu Imano hotspot truck. And so, that's been a fairly successful program, the street outreach.
I actually utilize this program often. There are cards that Nicole often gives out. I have many, if you want some. But I often use this program when I, like, the other day, I called them because I saw an elderly woman who looked unhoused, and I was very concerned about her safety. So, I called them, and they went and checked in on, on her. I, I thought that's what it was, and I've been saving this article that I found, I swear, months ago. I've been saving it on my tabs. It's, the Center for American Progress had a great article a while ago about community-based violence intervention programs, proven strategies to reduce crime. And I would love to see, obviously, I would want to bring them into a conversation, right? We can't just tell Community of Hope what to do. I'd love to bring them into a conversation about actually expanding this program. I think it does a lot of good work, and I think it has potential to do a lot more. I have talked to you briefly about what it would look like to do a model like Manu Imano, where it was an outreach program that was peer-to-peer for folks who've been there. Like, there is no better strategy or intervention in violence and addiction and anything that is proven, that peer-to-peer support is really powerful. And if we did a sort of Manu Imano model, where these weren't just volunteer peer-to-peer, they were paid folks who were part of street outreach, who were conducting surveys, who were conducting one-to-ones with folks. I mean, this article, I will send it to Christine, so she can send it around to everybody. But, "Community-Based Violence Intervention Programs Work to Reduce Homicide Shootings Through Trusted Partnerships with Communities, Stakeholders, Individuals Most Affected by This Kind of Violence." "These programs connect individuals most at risk of committing or experiencing violence or crime with community members who have walked a similar path whom they trust and respect." There's many kinds of models out there. I would just love to have a conversation about how we, we could grow this model that already is working and exists. already is working and exists. And really, especially as we talk about municipal court and having them do outreach court, what it would look like to have a really, really vibrant peer-to-peer violence intervention street model. Obviously, there'd be a lot of training and a lot of safety issues, but since we're in a conversation, and I don't know if it'll happen by May, probably not. But I would at least like to continue this conversation, Natalie. And so while you were here, I wanted to name that and name that publicly.
Thank you.
Thank you. The rest of my questions are not for you. I, thank you for mentioning both cannabis and Tellshore. And just to clarify, I had heard that by the end of fiscal year, it might be, on cannabis, it might be $2 million. Is that correct or did I hear wrong?
Mayor, Mayor Potem, oh, I'm going, why? Sorry. There, yeah.
The Mayor Enriquez, Counselor Bencomo, Josie Trevino. The projected at the end of the fiscal year, this fiscal year, June, we're projecting about 1.8. So we're looking at another $300,000 from here to then.
Okay. Thank you. That's still a solid, great number. Thank you, Mrs. Trevino.
Just to mention it, it, we're looking at FY '24 and '25 about the same number for the fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. I, I would really like to see a dedicated work session for the possible uses. I've been really, really intrigued by the idea and have talked to folks about utilizing cannabis for the MRAs, for jump-starting the MRAs, right? So that would, funding wouldn't have to stay there permanently, given that the MRAs will start eventually building their own revenue. But I, I would really love to see a dedicated work session for this. And I know in conversations with chief and the mayor that the Real-Time Crime Center could also be an allowable expense out of here. And I know that we are about $500,000 short on that currently, right? And so I just, my ask is that we have a dedicated work session for this. And then I think just given how the budget retreat ended, there's no really question on there, just dedicated work session. And then just given how the budget ended with the parks presentation that I think struck a chord within all of us, and as you, as you were reading the Tellshore Fund, the current by ordinance mission or definition.
Definition.
That I very much feel like supporting parks through the Tellshore Fund fits this already on a physical, mental, and social well-being aspect. And as I said at the budget retreat specifically for who primarily uses our parks, and I think that is a lot of our low to moderate income families. So I would also really love a dedicated work session for, for that conversation.
Mayor, Counselor Bencomo. So the cannabis is unrestricted, which means that anything is allowable. So you wouldn't have to look for allowable. If, if you wanted to restrict it, then you can do that by resolution and it, it would get done by council. The other thing, Tellshore Fund, this description right here was approved in 2005. So this can always be looked at and reworded or added if that is what council would like to do or keep it the same. Because what we do now is, it's usually the 600K, $600,000 that Natalie brings in. If we have other uses for it, we'll bring a resolution so they could allow for those uses for the Tellshore Fund. But yes, this one is restricted to this, but we can add, but those are done by, by resolution.
Yes. Thank you so much.
And also, Mayor and Counselor Bencomo, by resolution, also, we're supposed to bring to council on an annual basis, the report, the financials for Tellshore. And at that time, we always do ask if there's any changes in the definition that you would like to have at that time as well. Also too, as far as the cannabis for, that you mentioned that you would like to see a separate work session, I'm pretty sure that, and I'm looking at either Elizabeth and Chris, they're planning a work session for the MRA in May, May what? May 13th.
For the MRA specific or the cannabis?
Strictly for cannabis.
Right.
Yes. But that could be one of the possible uses that they may bring up at that time as well.
Okay. I think I, I think it would be important to do, and I guess this for mayor, okay, some context given that recently Chief Story sent us hotspot maps. Honestly, a lot of those hotspots are in the, in the designated MRAs. And I think often, you know, there are community members have been coming and asking us for solutions to safety. Often, we get really narrow on what those look like. I, but I do think that the metropolitan redevelopment areas and revitalizing historically blighted neighborhoods is community safety. And I think it's actually deeply intersectional and intertwined, the conversation around the Real-Time Crime Center and what that could do. And so I think it'd be great to have that conversation together as, as a, I don't know, community safety or well-being conversation, Mayor. But I, I just, the more and more I think about this, the more and more I think it'd be a great enriched discussion. It's not, it's not necessarily for you all, it's for this guy over here.
Thank you, Mayor.
And then that's it. And I guess I just, I know Barbara sends us updates on the opioid settlement and I look forward to the potential session in the summertime that will, they'll be coming to give us recommendations. Barbara, actually on this, do you think it'll be a joint session or do we expect it to be separately? We haven't had a joint session since the COVID Zoom days.
Yes, Mayor, Mayor Potem Bencomo, Barbara Bencomo for the record. Actually, you know, we will take direction as to how you would like to conduct that. Certainly, if, if you think that it would be beneficial to have a joint session with county commission, then certainly the, the mayor could make that outreach. We could as well to assist with that. Again, your, your decisions will be made for the amount of funds that we have, they will be deciding for their own funds. But if we want to ask questions about the, the needs assessment that was done and about the potential recommendations in one forum, we could certainly go in that direction and facilitate that for you all.
I mean, that could be really interesting. I think just given Counselor McClure's questions as well, I think, I think it's important that we forge the path forward together and in alignment. I think divvying up the funds will go a lot, will go further, will go less far. Wow, that took a minute to get out. And so I think it's really imperative that we do have a combined strategy, which I know is happening, Barbara, but perhaps they'd be open to the idea of a joint session. Thank you.
Anyone else? No, thank you. I just wanted to add, yes, I'm open to a joint session for, great question, Counselor McClure, if there's any overlapping, we want to make sure that we maximize the resources, all the funds that we're receiving into the whole county and city, that we're not doing our thing, they're, they're doing theirs and we're spending the same amount of money for, and then getting different results. We want, we want to maximize those resources. And yeah, I was taking notes and so I was calling it kind of a, a work session in the future, a community livability, that it fits one of the themes and, and we can address the Tellshore Fund, the cannabis, the opioid, and, and look at some of the, the things that were addressed at the budget retreats, such as the parks, the MRA, the, the Real-Time Crime Center, and municipal court. And also in conjunction, that was, that was some of the comments that came during public comments was, you know, the request was to have a work session on what are the next steps? What is the city going to do? And putting the funds to some of the problems that we have in the community and instilling safety, but enhancing our community as well. I think this would be a great time if we can kind of schedule that and open it up so the, the public can know that we are listening to their comments and we are addressing it with a work session that ties into the budget and to their concerns. I'll get with the city manager on that.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Other questions? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ann. Thank you, Barbara. Oh, is anyone from the public? Is there anyone? We want to use our new timer. Is, is there anyone from the public that has any comments or questions? Okay. Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second, Corin.
This is on the motion to adjourn the work session. Counselor McClure?
Yes.
Counselor Matisse?
Yes.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Karan? Counselor Flores?
Yes.
Counselor Bencomo?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.